And really, each day was designed to move us a little bit forward, to align with those professional development plans. But in this year's case, to move us for that last one, that March 15th, that Regional In-Service Day. We're gonna see how everything has followed together in a moment. Our Opening In-Service Day, this typically is the superintendent's day. We focused that day on establishing Power School as our primary source system for attendance and for grading. Attendance K through 12, grading 5 through 12. All of our middle school and our high school teachers received training on how to use that grade book. It was a very successful day, this day and the following day, really to set the tone for the year. Very high expectations of what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. The other good thing about Power School is that it does provide our parents and our students with a portal that helps at communication between the classroom and home. And again, it helps with the relationships. That work continued on the second day. We had continued trainings there. And again, it was a very good way to start the year, I felt, those two days. And October Day, we changed it up a little bit. In October, we were able to break up the staff into separate parts and focus on some key initiatives aligned to that professional development plan. We were able to bring in, with Mrs. Farrow's help, we brought in Susan Hens to talk in this space right here with all of our general classroom teachers and their co-teachers about that co-teaching model, what it is, what it can be, what we can do to make it even better. So that was a fantastic day there. We brought in Seth Aldrich to speak with our elementary and our middle school staff. With the elementary, he spoke about the new FastBridge program, about that screening tool using with the students. For our middle school teachers, he talked about what MTSS is, just to give everybody a common language. I want to point out, we also had a music teacher, regional in-service here, hosted at the school. I literally did nothing but said, "Say, Andy Bennett, you're doing a good job, keep it up." He arranged for all of our county's music teachers to come here. So it was wonderful, in that there was music in the hallways throughout the day. Violins playing, ukuleles playing, vocal. It was something very unique that I hope that we continue. Our helping, our PE teachers actually went to Bemis Point, where they had a helping PE teacher regional in-service day. So they're very busy. What I want to point out is that my name is on here as well. I hosted a Culture and Connections. It was 50/50, either it was gonna be very successful or it was gonna fail miserably. So that's why my name is up there. What was the Culture and Connections? It was something that was brought back by our Model Schools team. And it was, essentially, we wanted to build relationships. We wanted to get people out of their classrooms, meeting different people, and sending them to different parts of the building. One amazing thing about this place is the fact that we are three separate buildings on one campus. And very rarely do our teachers get up and move to the other building. So we thought, let's get people up and moving. So we randomly put them in different groups. We then gave them a scavenger hunt, a list of things, a list of places to go to. And we told them, "With your team, go there, find this, take a picture, and send it to us." And then we took all those pictures and arranged them for next meeting. So, for example, we sent our elementary staff to the high school and we said, "Find a door that you don't know where it goes, take a picture of it." We sent our elementary, again, to the high school. "Find the letter Z and take a picture of it." And this is my favorite. We sent all of our teams to the tech office and we said, "Take a picture with one Doug," because we have two Dugs going down there. So we've got a lot of pictures of, in this case, of Doug. So you can see, it was a very successful event because the teachers had fun. They got to go, they got to see what's going on throughout the district. My challenge is I have to top this for Opening In-Service Day next year. So stay tuned. Just recently, our January 28th In-Service Day, we focused on the new learning standards in ELA, in math, science, social studies, and the arts. We really looked at some crosswalks between the old and the new standards. We looked at the timelines for the new assessments as they're coming down, and when we have to have our curricular changes in place. To help those conversations, we did a Common Definition Activity, where we provided everyone with a set list of words, in this case, standards, curriculum instruction, and assessment. We gave them a definition and asked them to really talk about that definition, what it means to them, how it affects their department. It really did a nice job of creating a common vocabulary so those professional conversations could be even more effective. The rest of the day was dealt with grade level and departmental meetings regarding those standards. Again, a very successful day, a very different type of day as well. That's leading us to the day that is yet to come. And I'm still worried because of possible snow days, but we're gonna be okay. Mr. Sartistic says we're gonna be okay. Our March 15th is going to be a regional in-service day. We have the faculties from Castega Valley, from Westfield, they're gonna be joining us. And we're gonna be having a Model Schools presenter. His name is Weston Kishnik. He's written this book, Old School Blended Learning That Works. His whole message is to take traditional instructional strategies, layer them with digital instructional tools, and redesign your teaching so that it all fits together. When he is here, he's gonna talk about this. He's gonna talk about what priority standards need to be addressed in the lesson. That work goes back to what we did in January. He's gonna talk about selecting an instructional strategy that works. And where do we get those? His book talks about this. We've been doing, making this a book study in our Curriculum Council meetings. Very importantly, number three, what will I be doing in this lesson? What I like about his philosophy is that the teachers are an active member. It's not just presenting, it's being actively involved with the instruction. I just listed a couple of the strategies up there that he talks about in his book. Step number three, choosing that digital tool. What tool can you use that is going to work, that is going to emphasize your lesson? How is it going to make the teacher more efficient, more effective? How is it going to increase the rigor and relevance of the student learning? And so, for example, some Google tools. For example, the Google Suite that we currently use. Google Drive, Docs, Slides, Sheets, Classroom, Prezi, Kahoot. Our teachers are using a lot of these tools already. What this In-Service Day is going to allow us to do is to share them with one another. Continue on with his plan. How is it gonna all fit together, being very purposeful in that design? Step number five is to step back and assess, how effective was it? To see if it works. Are our students learning? This is what that 15th day, that March 15th is really gonna look, is really gonna look like. And what I like about this is that this ties in with a series of initiatives we've been doing over the last couple of years. Let me take you back, 2016, 2017. We had Dr. Bill Daggett come and talk to us about rigor and relevance for all students. He was talking about how it has, what we teach has to be relevant for the student. We invited him back the next year, '17, '18. And he talked about what we need to do to create future-focused schools, which was just last year. At the end of that meeting, he said to everybody, "You've gotta get your kids to quadrant D," which was his creation. And the problem was, he really didn't say what we needed to do to get to that quadrant. This gentleman, Weston Kishnik, he talks about how to get to quadrant D. So what we're gonna be doing in March really is the end product of three years of planning on our part. He's gonna be helping us create those types of lessons that get to that quadrant, that involves high-level thinking and practicality. So that's what we're really looking forward to doing. I'm very happy to say, the second half of this year, we're gonna be planning next year's in-service planning. We're gonna be, again, emphasizing high expectations, relationships, literacy. We're gonna be looking to better integrate those learning standards into our curriculum. We're gonna be looking at what we teach and how we teach those instructional needs. Doing something a little bit differently. Last year, last couple of years, we've been having only our administrators and our instructional leaders work on developing this plan. This second half of the year, we're gonna open it up. We wanna have all interested parties to come with us to work to design these days for next year. I have a good idea of the direction that we wanna go in. I wanna get people's feedback to say, and their thoughts, what will do best for us. My personal role is to expand this professional development beyond the five days. Five days is very limiting. And the last thing that we need to do is a great show, where everybody claps, wonderful job, and then we go back to do what we normally do. We have to expand this professional development so it's continuous throughout the year. That's the challenge I have to face. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And that March 15th day is going to be a very significant date for this district. So.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Rata? Mr. Rata, just a couple things. So when you do your professional development days, do you do an assessment or survey?
Every year, we send out a Google form that asks the teachers specifically what worked, what didn't work, what could be done better. We use that, we share that at Curriculum Councils, who wants to see, let people see what they thought worked very well. It's good feedback for us.
Yeah, can you characterize what you perceive back? If you could, I mean...
I think our teachers are now at the point where they truly appreciate time to talk instruction and curriculum. I think our January date was especially successful because we talked about the timeline of when assessments are going to be developed. And in the afternoon, they worked on that. I think now we're at a point where our teachers are asking for more vertical discussions. They wanna look at those transition years, going from fourth to fifth grade, going from eighth grade to ninth grade. They really wanna look at those transition times. Those are two of the items that really just kind of pop in my head right now.
Then relative to that professional development team, what is like the timeframe that you're thinking about?
Probably within the next three months. I like to have a plan in place at least by the beginning of May. Because if we do wanna bring in a speaker or if we do want to bring in people to work with certain groups, I can't do it the month before. So it gives me a little bit of time over to someone to really fine-tune and invite these people in to work with us.
And last thing I had was, one of the quadrants also had, I think it wasn't resources, it was something akin to that. And, yeah, my eyesight's terrible. In any event, do you have acquisition? I don't know if that's there, but do you have the resources that you need for professional development?
Yes, we're getting there. I think this year, we're using the Title Grants much more effectively. We're really targeting professional development. So if workshops are aligned to our professional development plan, we're able to find money to support that. This year was the first year that we were giving Title IV funds, which enabled us to have a little bit more funding to both bring people in, a literacy coach in our elementary school, this national presenter for our Regional In-Service Day. It allows us to do those types of professional development. So the fact that we had a very specific plan in place has made this year, in a lot of ways, much more easier for me, just because it's very targeted.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Paul Ford.
Sorry, Mr. Rata, so the March 15th sounds like a great curriculum, really, and learning opportunity for the teachers. So when we think about, you know, doing those things, how do we then, or, you know, what's the plan to say, are they getting better at this blended, you know, curriculum? And adapting those skills? What's the timeline for saying, you know, have they incorporated, have they gotten to that quadrant D in their own learning and applying, you know, what they've learned in that development day?
That's the challenge. After that day, because we don't have any In-Service days afterwards, we have to use our Curriculum Council time, the time I work with instructional leaders. We have to look at our building times with those teachers. And that will be the purpose of that committee, to come together and call up a plan, how are we gonna continue this for next year?
And I guess if they're, you know, what's the accountability? So everybody attends this, right? And we kind of put it out there, here's an opportunity for you to enhance your teaching and the learning in the classroom. And then, you know, what's the accountability for them to apply? Because I think, right, you can have the sheet at the end of the day, it was interesting, it was great, you know, I learned a lot. But what's then the accountability to incorporate?
And I think that'll be the project for next year, is to work on those lessons, to share out those lessons, to make those presentations. I would love to do an In-Service Day in which our teachers share best practices with one another. We had done certain things like that in Curriculum Council on a smaller scale. But I think we are almost at the point now where we're ready to have departments share with other departments. I love bringing in people, but I also know that we have a tremendous amount of talent on our own staff. We're willing to share those.
Right, super.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Rata, I really appreciate it. And then, Ms. Piper, MTSS.
Check.
Yeah.
No. All right. So we spent some time talking at our workshop, two weeks ago, whenever it was, about multi-tier systems of support. And you asked me to present a little bit more about that. We've talked a lot in the past about RTI. So I wanted to go into a little bit more depth about the difference between MTSS and RTI. So I gave you the two definitions that are most widely used out there. And RTI really is something that we've been doing for our district, gosh, I wanna say for about 10 years, we've had it in place. MTSS is really taking that a step further, including the emotional, social, behavioral piece, and looking at child response data. Both multi-tiered approaches, MTSS just takes it a little bit further. I mentioned at the workshop that really MTSS is the umbrella, that everything we do in schools falls under. And you can see all of the things under the umbrella there, and things that we've talked about here in this building, and what we talk about every day, really. We talk about RTI, we talk about intensive instruction, we talk about targeted instruction, core instruction. You look at school and community collaboration, parental actions. The UDL stands for Universal Designs of Learning, which is differentiating instruction in a systematic way. Professional development is, Mr. Rata just went through. The teamwork that we do within our schools, within our buildings, but also vertically as well. Positive and behavior intervention and support, as well as curriculum design. So those are the major things that we do, really, every single day. And MTSS really targets every single one of them, brings them all to play. So that triangle you see here, the RTI triangle, is really, this is how it looks in the MTSS model. In the past, we typically just looked at the right-hand side for RTI, the academic pieces. Tier one, we identify as all students. All of our students are given instruction in the classroom. So evidence-based, differentiated core instruction. Tier two are those students that may need a little bit more, a little bit extra, about 5 to 15 percent of students that might be just a little bit below grade level. And then those students that are tier three are really those students that are at higher risk. So we've been giving interventions to, but they're just having a more difficult time closing the gap. If you look at the left-hand side, MTSS breaks this down behaviorally as well. And so you can see, tier one is, we really always look at the behavior of all the students. We have classroom behavior management systems in every classroom, rules across the school district. I know we do pride now across the whole district. And that is done at tier one. Tier two might be those students that need a little bit more encouragement. We do things where we may have a counselor check in with a student in the morning, just to touch base with them, maybe just a little bit extra that they need. Tier three are students that might need a little bit more behavioral or emotional support. So they might need a one-on-one behavior plan, where they're trying to meet a specific goal and trying to really change their behavior specifically. And we track those students. We look at those students weekly, but informally, but we look at them formally quarterly, to ensure that we're making progress and growth. We're tracking every single one of the students who are targeted, not just at tier two and tier three, but at tier one, are targeted with goals. We have grade level goals the students are to get at quarterly. But then we have individual goals for the students at tier two and tier three as well. So RTI really is made up of these components, the evidence-based model of schooling. So we know what we do in schools, we're gonna have some evidence that it works. So we don't wanna just willy-nilly trick things and try things with its curriculum or instruction, whatever it might be. We really wanna have some evidence behind that. So we use database problem-solving to really look at the data, problem-solve using that information. And then we look back at it again to see if this works, if it's been successful. We also integrate academic and behavioral instruction and intervention. So we're not just looking at academics, because a lot of times, it's behaviors that are causing the academic delays. So we wanna make sure we're looking at the whole child. We also integrate instruction and intervention. So we talked about the multiple tiers, varying intensities based on the needs of the students. Every child is different. But we also make sure that it's need-driven. When I first started at the district, in many districts that I've worked at, we would wanna be fair in how we allocated resources, that every teacher got 30 minutes a day with a reading teacher. But what we came to find out was, maybe the teacher didn't need 30 minutes, maybe one teacher needed 45 minutes because they had more students that had needs, and another teacher didn't. And that varies throughout the year. So it's really student-driven and data-driven, how we allocate our resources. So it really has been much more purposeful. And then we can ensure that our resources hit where they need to hit. We talked about this at our workshop meeting as well, the importance of early intervention. And RTI and MTSS really targets early intervention. Because we know it's a lot easier to help a child who's four that has gaps than it is a child who's 14 or 18. So if we can close the gaps early on, we'll have a better chance of them being successful later in life. And so you can see this chart really summed it up for me, and this has been around for a while, and it really hasn't changed. But in a typical 100-hour week, students from different family types hear different types of language, whether it's the amount of language or the type of language that they're hearing. So when we get students into pre-teacher conversion, they really come in at different levels. And so the resources that I spoke about a few minutes ago really do need to be allocated differently, based on the needs of the students. You have a student that might come in being able to read, they're going to need a different type of resources than a student who doesn't know their alphabet. But what we find is if we can really target those students and those specific skills, we have a much better chance of closing that gap. Instead of just presenting the curriculum to everybody and kind of sort of hoping that it catches on to whoever might grasp it. We really target it, sit with the students in small group in one-on-one instruction. So what we've found over the years, and I say we have been part of the New York State Consortium on RTI for about 10 years now. We've done a lot of research behind, what are the essential components of MTSS? And what works with research-based? And we found that these are the main essential components in order for an MTSS program to work. And number one is you can see leadership. And I know, we all know the research that turnover of administrators typically is 35 years. But if you can see consistent leadership in buildings, you're going to have MTSS have a much better outcome. Or you just aren't able to sustain programs, sustain resources. It just, it works much better. When you break down MTSS into multiple tiers and instruction and intervention, and everybody understands that, another essential component. Using the problem-solving process. And that's something that we do weekly at the elementary school, and we're bringing it to middle school and high school. But we also do it for more intensive individual students on a monthly basis. We take a day a month, sometimes two days a month. And we really target students at tier three that aren't making progress. We're bringing their parents in, this is a community problem. We work with the parents together to really target specific strategies for the students so we can hopefully close the gap, not just ourselves, but with parents' help as well. Data evaluation, we're constantly looking at data. We're looking at informal data, classroom data, but we're also looking at standardized data, whether it's state test scores, whether it's the FAST information that Joe talked about. Our teachers have created interim quarterly assessments based on the standards. We're looking at that, we're looking at chapter tests, reading skills tests, a lot of data to make sure that we're really allocating our resources and using our time wisely. And we communicate it. We're communicating it all the time. One thing that we've seen that's important part of MTSS is PLCs, and those are professional learning communities. And that's really, again, coming together, looking at the curriculum, looking at the instruction, really talking about what you're doing and targeting that data, and collaborating constantly. Capacity building infrastructure. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. But we really need to have certain things in place, infrastructure, in order for MTSS to be successful. So I mentioned reaching consensus. And this is really important and something that we've been working on. I've been an elementary principal now for 10 years. And we're still, we still work on this constantly, because we learn all the time. Every day, we're learning more. New research comes up when we just start watching our students and what they're doing. So educators really need to understand the need for change, that we're not just putting things into place because it kinda sounded good, "Oh, it was a good idea, I heard about this from a friend." But really, there's a need for change. Why do we need to tweak some things? And then they have to have the skills to do that. And that's where the professional development that Joe talked about is so important. Because if they don't understand why they're doing something and they don't have the skills to do it, how could it work? And then also, consensus is gained when those beliefs are explored. We unpack them together. And then ultimately uniformly shared, that we have a vision. And one thing, another thing that has really helped us improve our MTSS model is the building level goals, the grade level goals that are specific. We talk about them all the time. We had our site-based team meeting yesterday, and we talked about our building level goals. And how are they doing, what's our progress on those? And the vision that we created those goals with, we're working on. They all know what we're working towards. And that the implementation requirements are understood from the boardroom to the classroom. And I included that piece because this board has been so supportive of understanding the needs of early intervention, that the importance of really having an UPK program that's purposeful, that really meets the needs of the students, that the students are there all day, that the teachers have a good place to work, you know, that we lack, it's a wonderful place to be. They're given the curriculum, the materials to do what they need to do with the students. The community collaboration is amazing. They have parents in the classroom every day. And that's really understood as part of our philosophy and culture here at Veronia. Some other critical areas to build consensus for MTSS. Sometimes it's misunderstood that MTSS and RTI are special education. And it's a general education effort. Tier one is everybody. We don't leave anybody out. So it's everybody, it's about every, every student. It's about core instruction. We know that if what every student is getting, if 80 percent of our students are reaching grade level, then our core instruction is defective. If we're having to provide extra intervention to most of our students, then we're doing something wrong in the regular core instruction classroom. So we really watch that. We look and see, all right, are the students learning what they should be learning? We're not just teaching anymore, we're really going through and making sure the students are mastery. Data are regularly used to inform and impact instruction. So we talk about pausing points a lot in the elementary school. Do we need to have a pausing point? Do we need to stop because not the majority of students haven't grasped that concept? Or maybe it's a particular class or a particular group of students that need to have those pausing points to go back and make sure that's mastery. And then policies and practices that we do across the district are aligned with our MTSS philosophy. So what does that mean for us? So that's really, I'm giving you about a year's worth of information in about six slides. I could talk for days about this. But this really means that we have a fully implemented RTI model. I think we've had just about every school from Erie County, Chicago County, come and visit. And a lot of them are replicating this, what we're doing. And it's not just what we're doing in Veronia. It's what schools, their model schools are doing across the country. What we're now doing is we're embedding social, emotional, and behavioral support. So we're looking at that data as well. Tomorrow, I'm spending some time with our counselor, our social worker, and school psychologist, looking at the students' grades two, three, and four, fill out what we call Sabers Data for FAST. They self-analyze, how are they feeling? Are they stressed? Are they feeling anxious? Are they happy? And then the teachers fill out that information as well. And what we found by doing this in the fall And what we found by doing this in the fall is, is we found some students that were really kind of worried about some stuff. And, you know, we were able to identify that, we were able to try to let the parents know, talk with the parents about that, get some plans in place, and really create a safer place for the students, so they could really learn at a better rate. So now, we've also created a district-level MTSS team that consists of all of our administrators, all of our school counselors, all of our school psychologists, and Ms. Rada, Mrs. Pharoah are part of that, and Mrs. Byer, our school social worker. We meet every eight weeks. We've developed a year-long action plan. We actually have a document on Google Docs that we're just, it's a live document, we're constantly adding to it. The minutes are ongoing, starting from August. We created a timeline, we were a little ambitious, so we've gone back, every time we meet, and we revamp it, so it really meets the needs of our staff, and we go back to that consensus building. Because there's a lot we want to do, but we know we can't do it until everybody really understands why we're doing it, what the purpose is. So we've been really focusing on infrastructure at the middle school and high school, developing some of the things that we need to have in place in order for MTSS to work, and raising the awareness of why. We talked about gaining consensus why, why are we doing this? We talk about it at the middle school and high school level. So at this point, I really was going to let Paula or Darren jump in, if you wanted to, about middle school pieces and then high school pieces.
Sure. At the middle school, we do have a committee that is working on developing a plan. Our hopes is that we will present it to you by the end of the school year, so you can see the plan that we will put into place for next year. And Amy talked about infrastructure, so that's what we're trying to get into place. We did use the PAMRAMA Social Emotional Survey this year. We actually are having BOCs come in and kind of walk us through how to use the data. We've done the survey, but we really want to know how we can use it to make some impactful changes. We are working on tier one curriculum, that's ongoing, and we'll continue to do that. At the high school, they are investigating restorative practices, and are looking at how they can implement this positive relationship-building program. I don't know if you want to jump in?
No, it's fine. I'm not officially here, thank you.
Okay, all right. They are also, at the high school, working on tier one interventions and vocabulary with the staff, having conversations, it's just a conversational piece, trying to get people to start to think about what it is, and what does it mean to them. And then, they have started this year, check and connect with their ninth-grade AIS students, which is really a great program to have in place, where there is a faculty member that really checks in with kids, and makes sure, you know, that they're on track, and have somebody that they can go to if they have questions, and somebody that kind of is keeping an eye on them, and helping them to stay on track. So Darren and I are, you know, trying to get things in place, we're trying to kind of educate the staff, and then trying to decide how are we going to move forward? Because it does look different than it does at the elementary school.
Glad I don't know if you have questions, but I was glad that Joe was able to present what he presented ahead of time, because it really does fall that, under that umbrella of professional development. And he mentioned that we had brought in a literacy coach this year to really work with us, our primary teachers specifically, but also now working with the third and fourth grade teachers, about how to improve our literacy. Because he's right, if students can't read, they can't really do much. And so we're really taking a hard look at how we're teaching reading, and making sure that we're doing it the best way we can.
Any questions for Ms. Piper, Ms. Troutman, or Mr. Paschke?
Yeah, I don't have a question regarding the presentation. Thank you, very well done. But I couldn't help but thinking, as you were going through this, we added a social worker this year. And I was just wondering, where's this individual located?
She's really everywhere, but her office is in the middle school.
Okay, and what student levels is she primarily, she, right, is she primarily working with? And have we been effective, do you think? I know it's unofficial, but do you think it's probably we've been effective with this position? Because we discussed it to great lengths, and we felt it was important enough to put, place it in the budget.
Absolutely. I would say, it's only, it's February, and I can only speak for the elementary school.
Yeah, we've had about half a year.
I would say it was the single most important thing we put into place this year. The impact that she's had has been remarkable, with families, with programming, with our understanding of things.
It kind of piggybacks from what the presentation was too, so I just, I just wondered where we were, we really haven't heard, we don't know where they are, who they're working with, and I'm just curious, so, thank you.
Let me add to that, if I can. I attended a elementary faculty meeting the other day, and Kat Byer presented on trauma-informed care. And, you know, the presentation was recognizing trauma in others, and how that can have an impact on their lives, no matter who they are, and really what age they are. I was really excited, because she masterfully transitioned it from focusing on children to talking to the elementary folks about making sure they're focusing on themselves as well, because you can't take care of someone else unless you're taking care of yourself. And so here she is in a new school, in front of, you know, a large group of people who she kind of knows, but she didn't bat an eye, and did a phenomenal job, and provided such great information, and then followed up with it after the fact by providing some more information via email. She is really doing a great job. And I say that because each of our building administrators tells me at least once a week what a wonderful job Kat did. You are going to hear from her and the student services folks-
Well, that's great.
... in the future.
Just a quick example of what Kat's helped us with, we created what we call a safe break program, for students who are identified tier two or tier three, for the behavioral and emotional side of things. And what we're doing in the safe break program is having the students learn self-regulation skills, so they don't have to be out of class very long. A lot of times, kids would have difficulty with emotions, behaviors, and they'd end up out of the classroom over and over and over again, or for a long period of time. And what we've learned is, part of the restorative justice, is they go into the safe break room with a trained aide with restorative justice, and they learn self-regulation skills, and they're only out of the classroom for five to ten minutes. They may have to be out several times initially, but now we're seeing that program having to be used less and less, as these children are learning how to self-regulate, and how to handle some of the emotions that they've had to deal with, with their trauma that they've dealt with in their lives. So that, there has been a huge benefit for us.
Very good. Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Wait, thanks so much, Ms. Piper, Ms. Troutman, and Mr. Paschke, and I'm not officially here. And, then, that takes us, Mr. Forbes, to your draft one, BOC's question.
Normally, at this time of year, you would hear the first budget presentation, the nineteen twenty budget. But what I've heard through the board and through audit committee members is that you would like to have something a little different this year. You'd like to have more comparative data, you would like, need to kind of cut through some of the preliminary adjustments that I make, and get more to, kind of cut to the chase kind of thing. And I also believe out of the last audit committee, that it was agreed that the audit committee, at least at that level, if not at the full board level, will be meeting more frequently in the next two months to review line-by-line items in a manner that provided more information for everybody. But I did feel it was important to start the process tonight, to at least give you a look at our BOCs services, with the idea that I would be coming to the board next meeting, that at least a draft is not-